Good evening. We call the order to the regular meeting in West Valley City Council. We note that all our council members are present at this meeting. At the start, we need to make an announcement. If any of you are here regarding item 8D on our agenda, which is application Z-4-2017 Roger Chase. This is for a zoning change for property at 3396 West 3100 South. If you're here for that, that item has been taken off of the agenda and will be rescheduled over the later date. There were some notification problems. So we cannot address it tonight. If we don't do the notification, it doesn't happen. So just so you're aware, I don't say a mass exodus, so I guess you're here for other reasons. We'll begin tonight with an opening ceremony. Councilmember Tom Young, you'll take care of that.
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to invite all of you to stand up with me and do the motion. Thank you.
Okay, then we have our minutes of May 23rd to be reviewed and approved tonight. To the council end for a motion.
Mayor, move for approval of our May 23rd minutes.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor of approving the minutes, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. Passes unanimously, the minutes are approved. Next, we have our Employee of the Month presentation. Madeline Ramos in the Community Preservation Department. Councilman Bueller.
Thank you, Mayor. Is Ms. Ramos here? Would you stand, please, while I read this nomination so we can appropriately recognize you? This nomination was submitted by Cheryl Simon-Cindy Hoffs. Madeline works with housing clients that are at times extremely difficult, but with her, I can do anything attitude. She uses her knowledge to assist everyone around her in a positive and helpful way. She's a single mother and sometimes struggles in the same ways the majority of the housing clients do. And with his personal understanding, her professionalism while speaking with clients on the phone or in person is always pleasant and courteous. Madeline conducts herself with the utmost positive and proactive attitude, even in the most stressful situations she faces. Madeline, on multiple occasions, goes above and beyond in assisting clients and mediating with their landlords to remedy their housing situations. This helps participants of the housing program maintain their housing assistance. Madeline is always flexible. Clients and landlords like her, draw to her and her attention to their questions and needs. Madeline assists them with everything from explaining why is my rent so high to logging into software. She is very aware of the client's needs and exemplifies this above and beyond in her daily activities. Madeline is extremely patient with other employees as well as she trains them on the software and processes of our agency. Madeline is an excellent asset to the Housing Authority, Community Preservation Department, and the community in which she serves. And with that, Ms. Ramos, you are the Employee of the Month.
Madeline, no speech is required. If you have some people here with you that you'd like to introduce to us, that would be nice.
So I have my dad, Dan, my sister Danielle, and then my son, Loa, and then my mom, Audrey.
Okay, welcome and thank you for sharing her with us. Now, people come for the things that they're interested in, so you're certainly welcome to stay, but you're certainly welcome to go and no one will take offense.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. And next on our agenda is our comment period. And apparently, no one signed up. Is there anyone here for our comment period? Public kids, please. Oh, there's one signing up right now. So let me check one more. Anyone here for just our general public comment period? If you're here to speak on one of our public hearings, then we'll do that separately in a few minutes. Okay. So no one from the public? City manager, any comments tonight?
No, thanks. Thank you, sir.
Council, any comments? Nobody's waving their hands, so we'll go now to our public hearings. We'll begin with public hearing regarding the proposed transfer from the Housing Authority of West Valley City Enterprise Fund to the Capital Improvement Fund. This does not require any action on our part, but we do hold a public hearing on that. State law requires that we disclose that in a public hearing. So let me just get that up. And I'm drawing a blank on that. How much were we transferring, Mr. Pyle?
$1.7 million, approximately, sir.
Thank you. Yeah. Okay. So this internal transfer doesn't raise taxes, doesn't change much, but we put it to where it needs to be. These funds need to be moved in order to be properly utilized. So that is the issue. So I will declare open the public comment period on this. Is there anyone here who would like to speak to this issue? Maybe some would come for that, but guess not. Okay, since I see no one here to speak to it, we will close the public comment period and that will complete that portion of the agenda. Now we'll go to the next item on the agenda, which is the reopening of the fiscal year 2016-2017 budget. And we will have a public hearing on that. This is not our new budget. Well, let's see. It's not our new budget for next year. It is our existing budget, but we have to hold an announcement for items that have changed. So because there are a few things that we need to do before year end, there have been some increases in grant money, issues that we have to deal with, some funds that will be spent. So we are adjusting our current year budget. That is listed in the documentation. There's a lot of items there. Most of them small, but some to do with bond proceeds that we are going to get in connection with buildings and fire stations, things like that. So that is the issue that will be before us. So, and this will be for ordinance 17-21. So with that introduction, we will now open it to the public and declare open the public hearing portion of the meeting for the budget. Anyone here to speak to this budget issue? Okay, then I'll close the public hearing portion of that. We'll bring it back to the council for addressing ordinance 17-21.
Mayor, move for approval of ordinance 17-21.
Second.
Any further discussion? Just for your information, these are coming to us. This is the second time we've actually discussed it. So if we don't have a lot of questions, we had a study meeting that covered that last, wasn't a week ago? Two weeks ago. That's why I couldn't remember. Okay? So with that, seeing no discussion, we'll go to our city recorder where we take, as required by law, a roll call.
Councilman Vincent?
Yes.
Councilwoman Lang?
Yes.
Councilman Bueller?
Aye.
Councilman Yoon?
Aye.
Councilman Krishnensen?
Yes.
Councilman Norfeld?
Yes.
And Mayor Bigelow?
Aye.
Motion passed with unanimity.
Thank you very much. Next, we go to item C under our public hearings. This is where the West Valley City Community Development Block Grant, CDVG, commonly referred to, our annual action plan and budget proposal for the recommended projects for the coming fiscal year, meaning our year 2017-2018, starting July 1st through June 30th of next year. And these are items where we allocate those funds based upon federal guidelines to various activities in our community and around the area. And so I suspect there are a few people here who may be speaking to this. This one usually generates some interest. So I will declare open the public hearing portion of this. Is there anyone here to speak to one of these items? I see half a dozen hands go up. More than half a dozen. They're not signed up in any way, so unless someone has a burning need to be first or last, we'll just start at the front and work our way around. And you sat on the front.
Oh, boy. I just made a lot of enemies. But thank you very much for the opportunity to go first. I'm Kim Correa with the In Between Hospice for the Homeless, and I appreciate the recommendation for funding our awning project. As you know, homeless individuals are located throughout the county, and we accept referrals primarily from Salt Lake County areas for people who are terminally ill and need a place to go for the end of life, as well as those who are fighting late-stage disease like cancer, where you can't start chemotherapy if you don't have a home to live in in a stable-home environment, or even just recovering from something like a serious cold, pneumonia, things like that. So the awnings, we're in a very old building. It was built in 1954. And this awning project will really improve the safety of our residents, our volunteers, and our staff as they access the building, especially in inclement weather, whether it's the burning sun or the snow, which we just had a couple weeks ago. So, welcome to Utah, right? So thank you very much for your recommendation. This allows us to complete a big portion of the back awning project, which is primarily the area where our residents go to get fresh air. So if anybody has any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Don't see any, so thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Appreciate you coming tonight.
Mayor, city council members, thank you for this opportunity. My name is Barbara Stoll. I'm the Development Director of Family Support Services, and we were recommended for funding, so I'd like to tell you all thank you for that. And instead of giving you a whole big long list of what we do and who we are, I just wanted to share a couple quick things. First, I'm happy to announce that we're celebrating 40 years of serving Salt Lake County residents. We do provide crisis nursery care here in the city of West Valley. We're grateful for that support. And because of that support, we served 929 children in our West Valley Crisis Nursery last year, and almost 400 of those were residents of West Valley. So the investment from West Valley in CDVG funding comes to just a little bit less than $24 per child that we have served from West Valley. So thank you for that investment. We love the work that we do. I know that you're going to hear a whole bunch of numbers tonight, and they can sound like a lot, but none of the numbers mean anything without understanding the humanity that's behind them. One little boy who stayed overnight at our nursery said to his mom when she came to pick him up, "Mommy, I love it here. The pillows don't have bad dreams." That's why we do the work that we do. He is why we are so grateful to West Valley for your support. And we are grateful for the commitment that we know that you have. And with that, I just want to say thank you.
Thank you.
Any questions?
Good evening. Stuart Ralphs from Legal Aid Society of Salt Lake. We deeply value the great support and partnership that we've had with West Valley City for many, many years. Barbara, I'm glad you guys are finally getting on your feet after 40 years. Legal Aid is 95 this year. The M Quipper Snappers, follow suit. You support our domestic violence victim assistance program. Most of the residents of West Valley City utilize the West Jordan Courthouse. It's much more convenient, and everybody loves that courthouse much better than the downtown Matheson location. We assisted 280 residents last year. The average cost of that service, it's over $70,000 worth of services. When I did the protective order cases full-time way back in the day when I first started at Legal Aid Society, it just was stunning to me to think that people were afraid to go home. I can't even conceive of that kind of world that people have to deal with, just like the children in Barbara's case, that you help your residents have safe homes. And I appreciate that great support and the ongoing funding that you recommend for us. So thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Sarah Ivory. I'm the Regional Director for YMCA Northern Utah Salt Lake County Programs.
Pull that pin just a little bit.
I'll grow a little bit here. And we're very grateful for their support for our after-school program at Redwood Elementary School. This is a program that we've been operating in partnership with the school for a number of years. And in the 2017-2018 school year, we're going to be combining the two programs that we've run there. One is a tutoring program that has really focused on academic support, working with the teachers there. And that's been a free program that's kind of short-term. And then we've been also operating a full after-school program with enrichment activities to help kids learn to make good choices and make sure that they have that kind of extended day. And next year, we'll be combining those programs. We realize that cost is absolutely a barrier for our families at Redwood. And out of all the schools we serve, this is the school where we've seen the most parent engagement, where our families are reaching out to us. They're at every single family night. These are families that really want to do everything they can for their kids. And we really hated to see that we had just the small number of kids accessing the paid program, large numbers in our free program. And this year, we're going to be making it free for anyone who wants to join so that all those kids can get both the academic support and the enrichment activities. One of the things that we added this last year was a hot meal every night for every family. And that may not seem like a lot for those of us that are able to seek it for granted, but it's a huge weight off the shoulders of a lot of families who are working long days and really struggle to put nutritious food on the table every night. So we're really looking forward to continuing that program and expanding it next year. And we really appreciate your support to do that.
Thank you. Someone else back here on the right?
My name is Jordan. I'm representing Big Brothers, Big Sisters. And I would just like to thank the committee for our recommendation of funding and tell you a little bit about us. In 2016, we were able to serve 70 youth here in West Valley City through our mentoring programs. And we were also lucky to have 29 of our mentors from West Valley as well. We use the CDVG funding to support our one-to-one mentoring programs, both through community-based and school-based ones. And most of the children, about 94% that we are serving, are from a low-income household. So this money definitely goes a long way. Our programs are a little unique in that we're giving an individualized relationship to these kids where a lot of other mentoring is in group setting. So we definitely appreciate the funding, and thank you.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Mr. City Manager, and Council. My name is Bill Merritt. I represent the West Valley City Police Department. I am the Lieutenant over the grants. And I come here tonight to also give you my thanks for considering us for funding. You've heard a lot of amazing stories tonight about how this money is used, and it just always makes me proud to be a part of it, to know that we are part of something bigger than our own selves. The way the police department uses this money, we have an officer who works full-time and devotes most of his time towards these areas that could use a little bit more assistance. He spends over 1,000 hours, probably closer to 1,200 hours every year, in these areas, conversing with literally thousands of people and building a connection and building a contact, a personal face that they have with that contact. And what's more is this officer is bilingual, so he's able to reach out to a greater population here inside of West Valley City. As we all know, a connection with the police department is vital in order to have success in cleaning up some of these areas. And that's exactly what our officer does for us. So we thank you. We look forward to being back here again next year, and hopefully, we can have the same success that we've had over the last two years. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Margaret Berglein, and I am here representing House of Hope. And I also want to thank you for this opportunity in recommending House of Hope. House of Hope has been around for 71 years, and I would not be able to say that if it was not for the communities that we serve. It is the community and the people that give us the opportunity to serve the women, the pregnant women, the mothers, and the children that we serve. House of Hope specializes in gender-specific substance use disorder treatment. We put a big focus on the children because the children didn't ask for it, and they unfortunately are worse off than the mothers most of the time. The funding that we are asking for is to put in an AC unit system in two of our four residential treatment homes that house our children. Currently, we have the AC units that are in the window, and it's not the safest environment. They can fall, and it's just not a safe environment when we have toddlers running around. Also, the comfort that AC units give is very nice when you're dealing with Utah weather, that the children and the mothers, they need a safe and secure environment as they struggle with the chaos of addiction, and they struggle with the lifestyle that that brings, and they try to leave that all behind, a safe environment that they can feel like home because most of the time, they've never had a home, and especially the children. It's the first safe environment the children have had ever. We average about 40 West Valley residents a year. However, in our residential treatment program, most of the women we serve are homeless. But we do work with them with the case manager to get them housing in West Valley City as one of the communities that we can honestly say we're grateful that there is housing here. Are there any questions? Thank you so much for this time.
Thank you. Anyone else on this side?
Good evening, Mayor, council members, city manager. My name is Matt Minkovich. I have the privilege of serving as the Executive Director of The Road Home. And our team exists to help people to overcome homelessness. We've had a longstanding partnership with West Valley City, and we're grateful to you for that partnership that has helped us to serve the over 8,000 people who turned to us last year in need of shelter. Those numbers do not please us in that if we go back about 10 years, I would have been before you talking about 3,700, 3,800 people who we would be serving in the course of a year. So the demand curve has moved in the wrong direction as it relates to homelessness, and as you've read, that's a problem for many. One thing that we are also doing that maybe is not as publicized are the number of people who are in housing. While tonight, there will be as many as 1,000 people in our shelters downtown and in Midvale, there will be over 1,700 people who are in housing through programming operated by The Road Home. I think that's a trend that's moving in the right direction. We need more housing in communities across the valley, and in doing so, we'll help more people to overcome homelessness more rapidly. That's our strategy going forward, and we thank you for all that you do to help us to help people to overcome homelessness. Thanks.
Thank you. Okay, we come over to this side. We'll just start in the front, I guess.
Hi, I'm Jan Carter from Ossie House, and I appreciate the opportunity to speak to you. West Valley City is an amazing supporter of our clients and their needs, and we really appreciate that. Our project for this year is, hopefully, finally finishing our HVAC for our oldest residents, which is our adult program built in 1901. Serves over 400 men and women a day. Over 12,000 men and women would be served over the life expectancy of this finally, finally updated system. And out of that group, we served about a little over 30 individuals from West Valley City last year. Based on how the numbers are increasing, partly because of our partnership with The Road Home, we're seeing the numbers are doubling this year. With that in mind, we predict that we may be serving as many as 1,500 West Valley community members during the life of the system. So we hope to help prevent people from going back on the street with our services. Many come to us homeless. It's usually around 55% to 65% of the individuals who come into our adult program declare themselves homeless, although they may indicate their point of origin from a particular county back when they weren't homeless. We are providing substance use disorder treatment and mental illness treatment, and about 70% to 75% of individuals are not only suffering remediation, but also mental illness. We have a very strong treatment for that. 91% of our clients that come into our adult program are extremely low-income. Many have no income at all. This hard-cost project is providing that safe, comfortable, healthy living environment. We have been not heating and not properly cooling that old four-story facility for a long time, and it's hard to keep the minds of these people struggling to recover focused during therapy when it's too dang hot and too dang cold. And we have had individuals who left treatment because of that, because it's too hot to sleep and it's too hot to focus in group therapy. And we thank you wholeheartedly for the recommendation. Any questions?
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Anyone else over here? Oh, someone I didn't see there.
I'm Pam Bodie. I'm from YWCA Utah, and I'm here to speak to you about our Women in Jeopardy program. I have a cold, so I'm going to be very brief and try not to cough. First of all, thank you so much for our current grant that was approved for our program this year. And with that help, so far, we have served over 650 women and children who, like Stuart said, are afraid to go home because of domestic violence. And our Women in Jeopardy program is a domestic violence crisis shelter with a full array of supportive services on our downtown campus. Of those 650-some-odd people that have found safety and opportunity at the YWCA this year, over 100 were from West Valley City. So your help has been critically important and so very appreciated. We're very grateful for the recommendation from the review committee this year, and we would be so honored to continue to receive your support. Thank you.
Thank you. Next. There's a couple more. There's three more. We'll get to all of you.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. Thank you so much. My name is Pamela Okumura. I am the Program Director, soon-to-be Executive Director of People Helping People. People Helping People's mission is to get children, to reduce the number of children living in poverty. And we do that by targeting single mothers that are in low-income levels and teaching them the path to self-sufficiency through employment. We are more than just an employment program. I like to say that we are a career development program. Does anybody know what the self-sufficiency is for a family of four? Do you know how much they have to make each year? It's close to $53,000. A woman that is making $10 an hour makes less than $21,000 a year. And with a family of four, even just rent, average rent here in West Valley is, what, $800, $900? Is that conservative? And then you tax on food and all of that. They're not bringing home enough in each month to even be self-sufficient. We teach them the path of self-sufficiency through employment and connect them with other agencies to help during that time. These are the faces of the people that we help and what your money goes to. Those are our graduates of our program. We use graduate very loosely because this is a lifelong program. Once you start, you never finish unless you retire. And we have several people. We've been around for 24 years. We have people that have retired, that never thought that they could retire. So, these are the faces, and these are the real people that you help. We get one woman off of any type of assistance. We save taxpayers anywhere between $5,000 and $20,000 annually. 85% of our graduates actually have been off of any type of assistance. 96% of them are employed full-time. Any questions? Thank you.
Thank you very much. And there was a lady here in front.
Hi, thank you so much. I am Peggy Daniel. I'm the Development Director for South Valley Services. South Valley Services is the one of two domestic shelters in Salt Lake County. We do a little bit more than just have our emergency shelter, which has been around for 19 years. Most of the, well, everyone that enters our shelter is homeless at the time they enter, and all of them self-report as being low or have no income. Some of the other things that we do now that you might not know is that we have community resource centers, which are located in community libraries and at the Riverton and West Jordan city centers, city halls. We do have one here in the West Valley Library, and we bring our services to the community so that they're more easily accessed by your residents. We also have our prevention and education team that go out and do over 400 presentations. They are at high schools and junior highs and middle schools teaching what are healthy relationships are and how to prevent, hopefully, lower the number of domestic violence incidences. We do have 98% of our staff are bilingual and are also female, so we can relate to those that are having problems. Just for your, we have our emergency hotline. Our last fiscal year, we served 306 residents from West Valley. We predict that we will be serving 750 residents in this next upcoming fiscal year. Our emergency shelter house 97 residents, and we predict we'll be at 150 for this upcoming year. Our case management, we had 700 hours from residents served in West Valley, and we will serve probably 800 hours. Our clinical services, which are just emergency clinical therapy support, it was 300 hours, and we were probably, will be at around 400 hours. 700 residents received services from West Valley from us. We will probably serve around 1,200 this year coming up. So, we thank you so much for your support, ongoing support for our services. And we work heavily with your victim advocates and police department with their lethal assessment protocols and help to stop domestic violence in your area. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Dani Foltz. I'm the Program Director at Utah Health and Human Rights. I would like to thank you for the opportunity to speak with you today and introduce us as an organization because this is our first time to have CDVG funds from West Valley. And we are very grateful for the opportunity to have been recommended by the committee. Utah Health and Human Rights has been serving the state of Utah, but mostly Salt Lake County, for 14 years now, specifically refugee survivors of torture. Refugee community has been growing lightly, as I'm sure you're aware, and as they expand resettlement into the surrounding communities, our organization's services expand as well. So, what we do for these individuals is we try to identify as early as possible through medical screenings what their experiences have been as refugees, what sorts of things they have survived, and what sort of unseen wounds they might be struggling with in working towards self-sufficiency within our communities. So, we are able to provide really intensive and personalized services for about 400 clients a year. That's our current capacity, and we're definitely hitting it. We provide case management at any level they might need and therapy services, group, individual, couples, families, adolescents. We have outdoor programs, activity groups, anything we can do with them to make them feel safe and welcome and part of their own communities. We are happy to do it and personalize all the services. We have 13 staff to provide these services to 400 individuals, and we are rapidly approaching 10% that are from West Valley City. Excuse me. So, thank you very much for considering us this year. We will be doing you proud every day, I promise. Are there any questions?
Thank you very much. Was there anyone else? Okay. If there is no one else, then we'll close the public comment period and bring it back to the Council where we'll consider Resolution 17-79.
Mayor?
Yes.
All of you who are receiving some of this funding are probably aware that the funding is usually not 100% of the request, and we try to help as many agencies and as many people as we can as judiciously as we can. We appreciate all the work that you do, all the help that you provide to our residents. And with that, I would move for approval of Resolution 17-79.
Second. It's properly before us. Any further discussion or comments, Councilman?
Just a comment. CDVG funding is constantly, as all of you are aware, under attack. Each year, we make a, one or two or three of us make a trip back to Washington DC to meet with our federal delegation, and it's always a tough sell. But we know how well the money is spent and how much it's needed. Oftentimes, they don't know that. They don't understand that this money is going to those who are most vulnerable and the most need. And so, we do appreciate the work that you do, and we'll just let you know that every time we go back, we're battling for that funding to continue.
Further comments?
Just an amen to Councilman Vincent's remarks. We wish there was more.
I have just a comment.
Yes.
You all come here to say thanks to us, but our gratitude is very deep for the work that you're doing. So, we thank you.
Very good. With that, then, to our city recorder for the roll call vote.
Councilor Northfeld.
Yes.
Councilman Christensen.
Yes.
Councilman Hume.
Aye.
Councilman Beeler.
Aye.
Councilwoman Link.
Yes.
Councilman Vincent.
Yes.
And Mayor Bigelow.
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. Next, we go to Item 9 on our agenda. And yes, if you need to leave, it's okay. It's almost traditional. Thank you so much for coming this time. Item 9, we will consider application S-4-2017. This is filed by Mindy Dempsey and Brian Flam. This is final plat approval for the Steely Terrace subdivision located at 1483 West 3220 South. Since so much time has gone by, I need to remind myself.
Mayor, I'm sorry to interrupt this one. Make sure that I didn't miss something there. On Item 17-79, which is the one that we need to remove right and you mentioned that at the beginning of the meeting.
Yes.
For 20.
22.
22, I'm sorry. I believe we need to remove that by motion. I just want to double-check. Okay, yes.
We do need to do that by motion?
By motion, yes, if you would please.
Mayor, I move that we remove Item D, which is the public hearing, and ordinate 17-22 from our agenda.
Second. Properly before us, any further discussion? And this is by roll call vote? Okay.
It doesn't need to be roll call vote since we aren't taking any form of loss.
Okay. All in favor of that action, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. Passes unanimously. It's removed.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Pyle. So, back to our new business. And let me just, okay. Approximately 2.3 acres. Was rezoned in May from agricultural to RM and changed, was never built, and so now we're back to a public unit development. 19 units on 2.3 acres. I think those are the main points of that. Anything else anyone would like to add? If not, we'll turn it to the Council for a motion.
I move for approval of application S-4-2017.
Second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, to our recorder for the vote.
Councilman Vincent.
Yes.
Councilwoman Link.
Yes.
Councilman Beeler.
Aye.
Councilman Hume.
Aye.
Councilman Christensen.
Yes.
Councilman Northfeld.
Yes.
And Mayor Bigelow.
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. Next is our consent agenda. We have two resolutions, 17-81, 17-82. One is to execute an assignment and assumption agreement for a temporary turnaround easement at Arbor Gardner Plum Sensat Hills. The other is a right-of-way contract on Sunnybrook Park Homeowners Association of Warranty deed and perpetual easement at 3121 West 4100 South. Those are our consent agenda items. Pretty straightforward and routine. To the Council.
Mayor, move for the items on the consent agenda.
Second. Properly before us, any further discussions? Seeing none, then we will turn to our city recorder for recording the vote.
Councilman Northfeld.
Yes.
Councilman Christensen.
Yes.
Councilman Hume.
Aye.
Councilman Beeler.
Aye.
Councilwoman Link.
Yes.
Councilman Vincent.
Yes.
And Mayor Bigelow.
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously.
Okay, thank you. We have on our regular agenda motion for an executive session, and we will be holding an executive session. But we will actually adjourn, leave this meeting. We do have several other meetings, brief ones, to approve budgets for the redevelopment agency, Building Authority and Redevelopment. Housing Authority. And so, just so you're aware that, let's see, do we take the motion here? I guess we would have to. Yes. So, we need a motion to go into an executive session following those meetings for the purpose of disposition of real property, pending litigation, and professional competence.
So, Mayor, I'd be happy to make a motion. I think that we would actually recess this meeting, take the other meetings, and then reconvene in an executive session.
You would motion to adjourn it to executive session concluding the adjournment of the other meetings.
So, I move that we adjourn this meeting and reconvene in an executive session following our regular business of the redevelopment agency, Building Authority, and Housing Authority.
Second. Properly before us, any further discussion? This one, a voice vote as well? I'm getting the thumbs up, so all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. Passes unanimously. So, we're concluded here, and turn it over to the...
It's the redevelopment duty. Okay. Call to the order, the West Valley City Redevelopment Agency tonight, and we have a roll call, and everybody is here tonight for quorum. And Item Number 4 is approval of the minutes, May 3, 2017. So, we'll turn it over to the Council.
Move for approval of the minutes of May 2.
Second.
So, we have a motion, we have a second. And now, any question? None. So, in all your favor, this motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? So, please say no. So, none. So, this motion passes unanimously. Item Number 5 right here, report up to executive officers. I'm sorry, you can see it. Officers, I'm sorry.
Thank you, sir. You have no report.
Okay, good. Public here, we have Item Number 6. It's, I will turn it over to the City Manager.
Thank you, sir. Yes, so this is our quarterly reopening of this entity, as the Mayor mentioned in the previous meeting. Not only is it the quarterly reopening, but it's the final one for the budget year. There's one item which concerns a utility relocation out of Market Street, which is a continuation of the Fairborn Station project.
Thank you, Mr. Pyle. And now, we'll have the public hearing for this. Anyone who wants to come up? And... None? Okay, I will close the public hearing and we'll turn it over to the Council.
Mr. Chair, move for approval of Resolution 17-07.
We have a motion, we have a second. Now, we turn over to the city recorder. Thank you.
Mr. Vincent?
Yes.
Ms. Link?
Yes.
Mr. Beeler?
Aye.
Mr. Bigelow?
Aye.
Mr. Christensen?
Yes.
Mr. Northfeld?
Yes.
And Chairman Hume.
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously.
Okay. And the, I believe, the second item be in here. I will turn it over to the City Manager again.
Thank you, sir. So, this is the annual budget adoption for the new budget year, starting July 1. And was, as was also mentioned in the previous meeting, and just for purposes of clarification and repeat, this item is before you at this time. As it is a proposed final budget, there is no property tax increase, which would be applicable anyway. So, therefore, it's before you now.
Okay. And this will go public hearing. I will open the public hearing. If anyone wants to come up and say anything about it FY 2017-2018. So, none, I will close the public hearing. I will turn this over to the city Council.
Move for approval of Resolution 17-08. Second.
Okay, we have a motion, we have a second. Okay, we have a motion, we have a second, and we'll turn it over to the city manager. They call. Yep.
Mr. Norfeld?
Yes.
Mr. Christensen?
Yes.
Mr. Bigelow?
Aye.
Mr. Bueller?
Aye.
Ms. Link?
Yes.
Mr. Vincent?
Yes.
And Chairman Hume?
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously.
So we have item number seven, is the one more motion, and we need it from you.
Motion to adjourn.
Okay. All in your favor, please say aye.
Aye.
So we adjourn.
Call the order, the building authority of West Valley City. Now that we have an opening ceremony, ceremony, and a roll call, and all are present, we have before us the minutes of the 2002 meeting. Do we have a motion or discussion?
Move for approval of minutes of May 2, 2017.
Sorry. Boy, I'm way back.
Catch him up.
Do you have a second?
Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you, that passes. Do we have a report from the executive staff?
No, ma'am, thank you for asking.
Okay. We'd like, we now have the budget opening for the 2016, 2017, final adjustments on the budget. Is there anyone, we'd like to open the hearing. Is there anyone here to speak to that budget? Seeing none, we will close that hearing and ask for either discussion or a motion.
Move to approve Resolution 17-05.
Second.
All in favor, oh, I need a roll call vote from the recorder, sorry.
Mr. Vincent?
Yes.
Mr. Bueller?
Aye.
Mr. Hume?
Aye.
Mr. Bigelow?
Aye.
Mr. Christensen?
Yes.
Mr. Norfeld?
Yes.
And Chairperson Link?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously.
We next have the budget for the 2017-18 tentative budget. We'd like to open the public hearing for that now. Seeing no one, we will close that public hearing and move it to a motion or discussion on the item.
I move to approve the budget. Second.
Do you think we have a motion and a second? May we have a roll call, please?
Mr. Norfeld?
Yes.
Mr. Christensen?
Yes.
Mr. Bigelow?
Aye.
Mr. Hume?
Aye.
Mr. Bueller?
Aye.
Mr. Vincent?
Yes.
And Chairperson Link?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously.
Do we have one more motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
And adjourn.
Call the order, the West Valley City Housing Authority. We had our opening ceremony and roll call, shows that we're all here. We have the minutes of May 2 of 2017 for approval.
I move for approval of those minutes.
Second.
The motion is second. Any discussion to the... And all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion approved, move. We've got, just like the other meetings, we've got the public hearings for, first, we've got some transfer of money. I don't know, Mr. Pile, you want to address that?
Yes, sir. So this is that same public input or hearing that's required under a new requirement by state law, no action attached to it, but the taking or opportunity for taking a public input is necessary for making the transfer from the housing authority to the capital improvement program in the city's budget. This is that $1.7 million we discussed in the previous meeting.
Thank you. So we'll go ahead and open that public hearing. Is there anybody here to speak to that issue? Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing and bring it to the council for action.
No action.
Oh, that's right, there's no action on this one. Okay. We're done with that one. Item B is public input regarding the reopening of the 2016-17 budget. As stated in previous meetings, there's been different revenues that have come in and expenditures that have needed to be changed, so we have that before us, and so we'll open the public hearing on the 2016-17 budget. Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing and bring it to the council for a vote.
Mr. Chair, I move for approval of Resolution 17-03.
Second.
Motion is second. Any discussion to this? Seeing none, we'll turn to the city recorder.
Ms. Link?
Yes.
Mr. Bueller?
Aye.
Mr. Hume?
Aye.
Mr. Bigelow?
Aye.
Mr. Christensen?
Yes.
Mr. Norfeld?
Yes.
And Chairman Vincent?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously.
Last item is accept public input regarding this new budget year coming up for 2017-2018 budget. So we'll open the public hearing. Is there anybody here to speak to this next year's budget? Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing and bring it to the council for a motion.
I move for approval of Resolution 17-04.
Second.
The motion is second. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, we'll turn it to the city recorder.
Mr. Norfeld?
Yes.
Mr. Christensen?
Yes.
Mr. Bigelow?
Aye.
Mr. Hume?
Aye.
Mr. Bueller?
Aye.
Ms. Link?
Yes.
And Chairman Vincent?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously.
Is there one more motion that needs to be made?
Motion to adjourn.
All in favor?
Aye.